The Town of Plainville. Established in 1721 at the geographical center of Connecticut.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our town council meeting. Today is Monday, October 16th, 2017, 7:00 PM. I'll ask you to please stand for the pledge and Councilman Ciota will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Before we start our regular portion of our agenda, I would just like to get a sense from the council here. If you wish to cancel the Monday, November 6th meeting, it's the night before election, typically everybody here and very many others are going to be involved in other activities. So I just need a consensus if you would like to do that. Everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Of course, if anything emergent comes up, let us know.
Will do.
Okay. So, thank you for that. We do not have a public hearing tonight, so may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I believe last meeting, it was actually Councilman Carrier that led the Pledge of Allegiance.
Oh, sorry.
Something like that corrected, but other than that, I'm...
Okay. Well...
I thought it was me.
It was you.
I thought it was you. I don't know. It was you? Yeah.
I knew it wasn't me. It says it was me.
Okay. And one other thing for the minutes, I think it was, the addendum was revised last meeting and it doesn't say revised addendum in the minutes.
Addenda.
Taxes.
Tax refund.
Tax refund addendum.
Revised?
Yeah, it didn't say revised.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else before we approve the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Announcements and reports? Does anybody have anything to report?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just wanted to report on the, I went to last Tuesday's Capitol Projects Building Committee meeting where we spoke about the Wheeler School project and I just wanted to report. It's moving along smoothly so far. You know, they did the schematic designs, so that's been submitted and will be looked over. And the next phase of the project is design development, which we're headed into. And as of right now, the, really the only holdup and the only thing that would hold us up is if the state never adopts a budget.
Uh huh.
At this moment, it looks like both the Republican and Democrat proposed budgets have Plainville's funding in their budget. So as long as they do have a budget, possibly, we can move forward.
That's good news so far. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report? I will just make a brief announcement that this Saturday is the third annual Pumpkin Fest in the Town of Plainville. You may be aware of it because of the giant gourd sitting on the front lawn of this building. We usually get several hundred people who come into Plainville. All the proceeds go to the Plainville Community Fund. It's really a great time. The weather looks amazing, so I hope you'll be able to come out. There's going to be food vendors and there's all kinds of other vendors. The pumpkin patch will be having children if they wish to carve pumpkins. So it's a great, it's another one of our great community events that everybody gets to enjoy. There is no admission, just come and have a good time. So I welcome you all to please stop by and enjoy the day. All right. There are no other reports. We'll move on to appointments and resignations.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to appoint Ashley O'Connell as a regular firefighter in the Plainville Fire Department.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of Adam Planetta from the Plainville Fire Department.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Are there any other appointments?
Yes, Madam Chair. I would like to appoint the three following persons, reappoint them actually to the Committee on Aging for terms ending August 1st, 2020. And that's Marilyn Pettit of 150 Broad Street, Rita Duyer at 15 West Pine Way, and Anna Smedek at 21 Welch.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Are there any other appointments tonight? None? Okay. All right. The next part of our meeting is Board of Education liaison. We have an item for regarding the school administrators' contract. Are you giving that report? Or is Superintendent Brummett going to do that?
Well, I could...
Or is there more to, somebody else is going to talk about this?
I talked to Mr. Lee today, but he can handle it. Do you want to give a report?
Okay.
I was going to do my report.
Sure. Go ahead.
Let's not argue about it. Let's just get up.
Go ahead. We're waiting.
We're off guard. Hi. Andrea Saunders, 55 Fawn Drive. I know on Friday, the council was forwarded the ratified administrators' agreement along with a letter from Dr. Brummett sort of outlining the details. It includes a summary of the salary and benefits for the next three years, which runs from July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2021. Unless you had any, you know, questions or comments, because you have all the information in front of you, that's why I talked to Mr. Lee, that's why I wasn't sure if I was doing a report. You know, I can summarize what's already in the letter, but I know you guys have already seen it, so...
Well, it's up to you. I think it should be, the highlights should be discussed so that the public knows what we're voting on. You can do it, or if you'd rather somebody else do that?
No, no.
Or do you have more of a report of other things?
I do have a report of some other things, but I have the letter, so I can briefly go over the highlights of the contract. And as you know, you guys have three options. You can vote to accept it, or you can vote to reject it, or you can just let it go for the 30-day period, so. So I'll actually just read the letter. So, see, it's the newly negotiated contract between the Plainville Association of School Administrators and the Plainville Board of Education for the period July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2021. As the current administrators' contract is scheduled to expire at the conclusion of this fiscal year, the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Business Operations, the Board's Attorney, and Committee of Board of Education members, Town Council Chair, Mrs. Puglisi, we met with the Administrators' Union throughout the month of August to negotiate a new contract. As a result, here are some of the highlights. It includes, number one, a salary increase for the next three years, 2.16 percent in the first year, and that includes general wage increase plus the step. For 2019-20, it's 1.55. Again, that's a general wage increase plus the step. And in 2021, it's 1.5 percent, no step increase. Number two, the Board of Education will contribute 40 percent of the required deductible payment. It's 2,500 individual, 5,000 per family, in each of the three years of the agreement. The employees will be responsible for contributing 17 percent, 18 percent, and 19 percent of the premium cost in the three years of the contract. And then lastly, the Board of Education will pay an allowance of $50 per month to each administrator in consideration of each administrator's use of his or her personal cellphone for school district business. That's really the highlights of it. Most of it, some of the things were wording changes, nothing that affects, you know, any monetary amount. So I don't know if you guys have any questions, comments?
Anybody have any questions about the contract that had been ratified? Any comments? Okay. I guess they're satisfied. Thank you.
I just have two other things, I guess, while I'm up here. Last Wednesday night, the Board of Ed Facilities Committee met to discuss the energy project, which includes the new boilers for the middle school of Plainville. Councilman Carrier and Mrs. Puglisi were there.
Steve was there also.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mary. I'm sorry, Rosemary. You're right. You were there. I'm terribly sorry. Basically, the board had a tour of the boilers. The first boiler that we were speaking of is, cannot be repaired. The second boiler, the backup one, is being used temporarily. So we know that tonight you guys are, we know you voted before to allocate the money. Tonight, you're voting to spend the money. Once you do that, it'll take approximately one month for the project to be completed. And if you guys have any questions, more specific questions, Mr. Bustle is here and he has a gentleman with him from McKenny Mechanical. So it's up to you. If you have any issues or questions, you can ask now. You can wait till you vote on it. It's up to you, so...
I think it's, the town manager has that under his report, so we'll just ask questions during that period. Thank you.
And then, just lastly, on the budget, Dr. Brummett attended her meeting of the Hartford Superintendent's last week, and she met with the Commissioner of Education. She heard all of the superintendent, the area superintendent's frustrations over the lack of a budget, and she acknowledged that her own department is being significantly impacted. She said there's still no resolution in sight, and the drop date of October 13th has obviously come and gone. She said there was some discussion about whether, once a budget is passed, the districts will get retroactive funding, but no one seemed to know for sure. And she said Dr. Pettit told her on Friday that both sides are very far apart and nothing will happen for at least another week. But a few of us had saw Dr. Pettit last night, and he said they have not, they're not being called for a meeting this week and they probably won't be, they need to stand by for the week of the 23rd. So it didn't look like anything was going to happen this week at all with the budget. And that's the latest I have on that. And that's it. Do you guys have any other questions?
Any questions for Mrs. Saunders?
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Item number eight, reported to town manager, Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have a couple of items. First of which is the middle school boiler replacement. At last town council meeting, several questions were raised with respect to the boiler at the middle school. Dr. Brummett and Steve Bustle are here this evening to provide some additional information. I know they brought a guest along with them as well. So with your permission, I'd like to ask whoever...
Please.
Get up easy. How you doing? I brought Dan Verone. He's the president of Power and Process Incorporated. They're a boiler manufacturer's representative from Southington. They're one of the people that have come out and looked at the boilers and are helping us size it properly.
Can you, yeah, talking to the microphone a little better? That's for the...
This is Dan Verone from Power and Process. He's here to speak about the boilers.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi there.
My name is Dan Verone from Power and Process, and I'm a manufacturer's rep. And I design, specify, make recommendations on boilers. So I've been asked to come here to answer any questions that you might have on the boilers that they're proposing for this project.
Okay. Well, there was, we, there's a little discussion about this at our last meeting two weeks ago, and a comment was made that can't the boiler be welded? So perhaps you can embellish on that from what you've seen of it and know of it, and could you tell us about that solution?
Sure. There's a couple of things. I mean, boilers have a expected life expectancy, 30 years maximum, and it doesn't owe you anything anymore. I believe those boilers are about 26 or 27 years old now. It all depends on how they're maintained and operated throughout their life. I visited the site back in April, and the boilers that are there now, the technology that was available back then is, I simulated it to a '72 Monte Carlo. I happened to drive one of those when I was in high school. Four-barrel carburetor, three-speed transmission, not so efficient on gas. The newer boilers are much more efficient, if efficiency is a concern of yours, not only the efficiency of how cleanly it burns the fuel, which is natural gas, but also the operating efficiency. You have two 5 million BTU boilers out there. One of them can carry the building. They're cycling boilers. And the other side of the equation for efficiency is how boiler will operate during the day. One of the goals that we have when we design systems is to let a boiler stay on as long as it possibly can, cruise, just kind of cruise along, don't shut off and start, and shut off and start. Because every time a boiler shuts off and starts, it's an inefficient event. Because when the boiler starts back up again, it has to purge air, which goes right up the stack. So without getting too technical, the amount of energy savings will be significant if you do do this project because of the efficiency of the way gas is burned and the efficiency of where the boilers operate.
Have you looked at this, one that's in question? Have you actually inspected it, or you're just giving us some information about it?
No, no. I've been to the site. I didn't expect the internals of the boilers.
Okay.
That's not what I do. I just evaluated their size, their capacity, their age. And even if the boilers were brand-new, but of that vintage, if somebody went back in a time capsule and could find brand-new boilers that were of that model and style, the efficiency gain, those boilers, brand-new out of the box, are about 80 percent efficient. Predicted efficiency based on their age, maybe proper maintenance, they're probably 70 percent efficient. The new boilers will be in the high 90s, 95 percent efficient. That's quite a gain in efficiency. That's just combustion efficiency. The other efficiency is, instead of having one 5 million BTU boiler which is carrying the building and a 5 million as backup, which is what is there, we put multiple smaller boilers in to extend their turn-down. We call it turn-down. How long, we want them to stay on as long as possible. We want them to run at 20 percent, 30 percent, 40 percent, 50 percent, 60 percent, all the way up to 100 percent fire and modulate and just stay on and stay on and stay on, not off, on, off, on, off, on, which is what's occurring now. But that's the only technology that was available back then, so that's, that's why you have them. The engineering for these boilers has been pretty awesome to address efficiency.
Madam Chair. Taking the efficiency out of the picture, we know that obviously if we get new boilers, the efficiency is going to be a lot, you know, be greater. So let's just assume we're not going to go with new boilers. And I don't know if you can answer this question or not, but if we were to repair the current boilers, first of all, let me ask the question, because I don't think you actually answered the question originally. One, can the boiler be fixed? And two, if it is fixed, what would be the life expectancy on a repaired boiler?
I really cannot, because I did not inspect the boilers. That's not what I do. I didn't inspect the boiler's internals. You really need to see the insides of the boilers. You can't look at them from the outside and make that evaluation. Same thing as a engine on a car. You got to get inside, you got tolerances. I heard somebody say before that one of them can't be fixed. I don't know how that was derived or determined, but I was, somebody else that was speaking said that one can't be fixed. I don't know if that's true.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Maybe we...
You didn't get filled in. Yeah, the one boiler failed.
Oh.
Number one boiler, got a leak in it. It's split. It's got a crack on the outside and it's got a crack on the inside because it's filled up the combustion chamber with about six inches of water.
Okay. Yeah. So that boiler cannot be repaired? Cannot?
It can't.
It's catastrophically failed? Those are ASME pressure-rated vessels, and once they're compromised, you cannot repair them. So you have one operating boiler. Did I answer your question?
Well, I'm not sure if that answered my question or not.
Well, I didn't see the boiler actually myself. I didn't determine that it was failed. I just heard tonight that it was failed.
In your professional opinion, since that boiler, now there's water all over the place, you're saying that it cannot be fixed. Do we know why it can't be fixed? Can it be repaired in some sort of way? Can it last another couple of years if it's repaired?
I really can't answer that question. I'm sorry.
Okay. Are there any other questions regarding the boiler? And I think everybody understands the efficiency aspect of what's going to happen by replacing that.
Mm-hmm.
The question is that we were trying to get answered and was whether, as Councilman Ciota said, if it could be repaired. And we understand that it has failed, so once that happens, there's no going back to...
Generally speaking, boilers can be repaired, yes. Generally speaking. This particular boiler, its particular failure, I have not seen it, so I can't really comment. How long will a boiler last after you repair it?
Okay.
Again, who knows? Who knows? So...
Madam Chair, can I just ask one question here?
Yes. Are you all set? Before I, we go on? Okay. Sure.
So you were, you said something about it being a compression issue, and once it fails, it's failed. So if it's something that's under pressure, is it, like, can it be welded so that you can put it back under pressure?
Okay. So back, so based on my experience, we could be talking about boilers, we could be talking about tanks, hot water tanks, any kind of, any kind of pressure vessel. Pressure vessels are manufactured to very strict tolerances and standards and are rated to the ASME, which is a boiler code, and they're very strict under guidelines. So what's the thickness of the wall of the tank or of the boiler vessel right now? I have no idea. Is it as thin as paper? Because it's been in operation for 27 years and finally breached? If you weld it, does that just repair that spot that broke and then three months from now, the next paper-thin spot will fail? I can't, I can't. I can predict probably that will be the case, but I can't state it firmly. But generally speaking, metal wears away. It erodes away over time depending on the chemical treatments that were applied over the course of its life. If it was taken care of properly, it has a better chance of surviving a repair. But I can't.
So you're saying even if you could locate that breach and repair it successfully, you'd be most likely playing whack-a-mole with other potential breaches?
It failed for a reason. It breached for a reason. So therefore, potentially, it could happen again. So yes, you can emergency repair that spot, and it's likely, though, that if that spot has breached, then the next spot's going to occur later. And the other boiler, which is the same age, is probably right behind it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just, and this may be more for Steve, like, would we, under current law, would we even be allowed to try and repair that kind of failure, a compression failure? Like, to me, that's, you know, any tank, I mean, once you lose that, I would not think that any inspector or any government agency would say, yeah...
I would think you would lose a certification. I would, I would imagine you would lose your certification on that vessel once you started doing repairs. You'd have to have it...
You'd have to tell somebody that you're doing this.
You'd have to have it, you'd have to some come out and pressure test it again, right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Steve or our visitor? Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Next item I have is the Farmingdale Canal Heritage Trail update. This Wednesday, October 18th, there will be a collaborative workshop to review and discuss the characteristics of the preliminary preferred alignment in Plainville for the gap closure trail study. The workshop will be held at the high school cafeteria beginning at 6:00 PM. The meeting will begin with an open house where residents can provide feedback on specific sections of the proposed trail. There will also be a presentation that will provide overview of the process used to narrow the alternatives into the preferred alignment. There will be a question-and-answer period followed by another opportunity to provide feedback in an open-house setting. Residents are encouraged to attend the collaborative workshop to speak directly to the experts who have been involved with the trail alignments in communities across the U.S. and abroad. Next item I have is the Water Push Control Phosphorus Project Mailer. The project mailer will be included in the sewer user bills that will be mailed on November 1st. There was some additional information added regarding the environmental benefits of reducing the discharge of phosphorus into the Paquavik River. That's since our last meeting. In order to have the information available to be in the sewer bills, any changes need to be made this evening or any suggested changes, unless there are any further suggestions from the town council, the mailer will be printed and mailed as submitted. Any information for this evening's meeting, since I wrote this, I know there was one grammatical error that was pointed out to me that will be changed, but other than that, it won't change the language to any great degree. If there's any other suggestions, certainly would welcome them, you know, otherwise we're going to move forward.
Okay.
I do want to expand a little bit about, from what Councilman Carrier mentioned at the beginning of the meeting with regards to the, to the school building project, and this would be reported to the, to the building committee as, you know, as well. It's a two-step process with regards to state reimbursement. One is, if the town files paperwork by June 30th of each year, we're, you know, we lock in a reimbursement rate. The question becomes whether we, whether the town gets put on the priority list, which is part of the bonding portion of the state budget that's approved, you know, each year. The bonding portion of the budget has not been approved. That's something that hopefully will be put in place in the near future. And the report that we have from the State Department of, Department of Administrative Services, which, which has the school facilities unit underneath it, their director has informed us that both the Democratic budget and the Republican budget include Plainville being on the priority list. So both proposed budgets put up by, you know, each side, so to speak, has a Plainville on the priority list, so that's a relatively good indication that, a relatively positive indication that will secure our school, you know, project funding, you know, as, as we were told we would. There is, the difference between the Republican budget and the Democratic budget, as it was explained to us, was there was a project in Greenwich that was on the Democratic list but not on the Republican list, and that's really the only difference between the priority list that were submitted as part of the bonding portion of the project. So just wanted to, just to expand a little bit upon, with Councilman...
Better.
In addition to that, before we get to, before I go to the financial dashboard, the governor today put out a, a suggested, a second, what he's calling a governor's compromise. You may recall that back in early September. He put forth a compromise budget. He has updated that compromise budget, which just came out today. I was able to put some numbers together. I did put a spreadsheet in front of you for this evening's meeting. You may recall that a month or so ago, under the governor's compromise budget, Plainville would lose about $850,000 from what we had projected, what we have in our budget for the current fiscal year. Under the governor's compromise, number two, that number's been reduced slightly to $845,000. So his compromise budget is still, you know, relatively significant, although it's, it's less than it was a month ago. The second year of the budget, it would be on the, on the second page, the second year of the budget, the difference between compromise one and compromise two is, we actually see an, the second year of the budget, we were going to see an increase of, is proposed for 18 by about $50,000. That's now about 51.6. So the second year of the budget is supposed to, you know, if adopted, the governor's compromise, we would actually see a slight increase to revenues compared to the drop that we're going to see in the second year of 18. I was at it, I did attend the meeting last Thursday where Ben Barnes, the Secretary of the OPM, was at, and I asked him specifically a question about, you know, that the governor's compromise budget showed a reduction of $850,000. The Republican version of the, of what they proposed actually had an increase to Plainville of a similar number. So it was a pretty wide range between the two, and I asked him, you know, if it would be reasonable to assume that it's going to be somewhere between those two numbers? And he said that, you know, based upon what he knows today, it would be, you know, reasonable to assume that it's going to be somewhere between those two numbers, or, you know, probably closer to the governor's compromise than the Republicans' increase, but, you know, not anything significantly different from, and that's at the lower end. not anything significantly different from, and that's at the lower end. So I just wanted to keep you as up to date on what's happening up in the heart of what is actually possible to do.
Thank you.
With regards to the financial dashboard, this was put on the town webpage, I believe, on Friday. I'll go through it, in case you have any questions. With regards to our expenditures, and this is expenditures through the first quarter, the first quarter is, ends, ended on September 30th. So the town budget in terms of expenditures, we've spent 22.13% of our budget. Two-year average is about 22.93, so we're tracking a little bit less than the two-year average. We're pretty much on, in line. General government budget is at 34%. We generally spend about 33.5% over the last two years, so that's pretty much in line. Board of Education has spent 14.48%, two-year average is 16.05. So pretty much on the expenditures side, we're tracking as, as, uh, as budgeted. With regards to police overtime, we've spent 33% of the budget. We have historically gone over in police overtime the last several years, although we are tracking a little bit under our two-year average. Oh, that's, you know, while we're tracking over, we're tracking, you know, under what we have in previous years. With regards to roadways overtime, um, we're tracking under budget, uh, right now, as it stands. Buildings and grounds, we're tracking a little bit over budget. Most of that has to do with some of the additional, um, personnel that has been put on, specifically the balloon fest. There was some additional, uh, buildings, buildings and grounds personnel that were assigned that weekend, specifically knowing the types of crowds we have received in, uh, in the past year or so. But that's, you know, a slight increase over our, uh, two-year average. We have not spent anything on roadway, snow, or buildings and grounds, snow overtime is at this point. Guess that's obvious. With regards to the hauler tonnages, we're, uh, we're running about 110 tons over our two-year average, but it's relatively early in the season as far as that's concerned, and that could be as simply tracking some weeks and whatnot. So we could need a little bit more information to see if that's a trend that's, that's gonna significantly impact the budget at this time. With regards to revenues, we've received about 44% of our total revenues that we anticipated for this fiscal year and past years. We, two-year averages, we've received about 44% of our revenues. We're tracking, uh, revenues, uh, that does not include the ECS payments that were made in October, so, you know, which came in under what we anticipated. That's through the first quarter. With regards to current taxes, we've received 56.77% of current taxes as of September 30th. Two-year average is 56.27, so we're, we're tracking a little bit better than the two-year average as far as current taxes are concerned. We have information with regards to the estimated unassigned fund balance, which now stands at a little bit over $10 million. With respect to our special funds, recreation, Robertson Airport, Water Pollution Control Authority, and Plainville Library expenditures, they're, you know, nothing of any great significance as far as that's concerned. It does, what we are showing is that the Robertson Airport fund balance is standing at $472,000. The health insurance fund continues to be problematic. The, uh, our year-to-date expected claims are about $975,000. We're running about $200,000 over our expend, over our expected claims right now, which is a trend that concerned us last year as well, so the council is gonna have to address that at some point in time. Right now, that difference is being covered by, by the general fund on a temporary basis. With regards to the major projects, um, the park improvement fund, we could, you know, they're finishing up some fencing at that point, as, as we, as we are during this month. The, uh, the last major expenditure as far as that project is a, a bathroom concession facility for the Norton Park. We expect that that's gonna be designed over the winter time and constructed next spring. I'll be meeting with the several little sports organizations shortly to finalize that design. Turf field project, uh, we're going, you know, the contractors have asked for mediation, so they're preparing to do some mediation with regards to that particular project. We're pretty much done with the road bond for the current fiscal year. Cook Street reconstruction is pretty much completed. Phosphorus removal project, no new expenditures during the month of September, although they are working on moving forward with their project. And you have some information on the wheel school project. Just to explain, if you look at the project that was approved, which is $22,260,000, you'll see that there's revenue to date, $109,000. That's the $109,000 that the council approved a year or so ago for startup costs. We, we wanted to include that as part of the project, because some of the expenditures are against that as well, so. So that was an additional appropriation that was, that was done early on to, to pay for some of the costs before we, before, that were incurred before referendum. And we're tracking those because those will be reimbursable. Some of those costs will be reimbursable through state grants as well. That's all I have to report on the financial dashboard. I'd like to turn it over to Scott for happenings and then be available to answer any questions from there.
Good evening.
Hi, Scott.
I just have a few things to report on, two being from Public Works. They are continuing their bulk pickup schedules every Monday running through October 30th, so there's two more left for the season. Eligible residents must call CWPM at 860-793-6721 to schedule a pickup. When calling, you'll need to provide your name, address, phone number, and a complete description of the items to be collected. Calls placed by 3:00 PM Friday can be scheduled for collection on Monday. And leaf collection is just around the corner. That will begin Monday, October 23rd, and will run through until December 1st, weather permitting. Please make sure to rake your leaves to the curb line as early as possible. Be sure not to block sidewalks or walkways. Grass clippings will not be collected, only leaves. No sticks, no stones, please. And if your street has an island on it, please do not put the leaves on the island. Bagged leaves will not be collected at curbside. However, you can bring them to the drop-off center at the transfer station on Saturdays from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And during the month of November, the drop-off center will be open Monday through Friday from 2:00 PM to 4:00 PM for leaves only. Over at the senior center on Saturday, October 21st, at 9:00 AM, they're offering a 2.6-mile hike up to the Hublin Tower in Simsbury. The trip will leave the senior center at 9:00 AM and return approximately 1:30 PM. The cost is $10 and it includes transportation. You will join their fitness instructor, Jared, on a scenic fall foliage hike. They will sum it up to the top where the tower is. The tower will be closed on that date. The hike is rated moderate. For those who are looking to go, please dress appropriately for the weather and call the senior center to register. On Tuesday, October 24th, at 10:00 AM, they're having croquet at Pateroski Park. Join their fitness instructor for a friendly game of croquet. Please call the senior center to register for this free event. On Saturday, November 4th, from 10:00 AM to 2:30 PM, they're having their senior center's annual holiday craft fair and quilt raffle. This is free admission for everyone. Come enjoy and take home some lovely craft items and home baked goods. Visit local vendors and have a freshly prepared lunch and take a chance on their beautiful handmade quilt in a raffle. All the proceeds are donated to Dial-A-Ride. And until December 7th, they're having Medicare enrollment. Help is available by appointment with the Plainville Senior Center. During open enrollment, you should review your Medicare choices and, if needed, change plans to meet your current healthcare needs. You may be able to save money, get better coverage, or both. This is available to all Plainville residents over the age of 60, and please call the senior center for an appointment. And on Saturday, October 28th, the Plainville Fire Company is hosting their semi-annual pasta dinner from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And that is all I have to report on.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Robert or Scott with their reports? No? Okay. Um, Robert, when did you want to hear, what's the deadline where you wanted to hear about back regarding the mailer? I know you wanted to get this out by November 1st, so if anybody has any other questions, as soon as possible. Is everybody good with the mailer?
You're good.
Yep. Okay, good to go.
All right.
No problem. All right. Okay, um, moving on, we are going into our public comments section of the meeting. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome the public to come to either podium. Please state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to speak. I have a list of those that have already signed up. Once we've gone through that list, then I'll open it up to anybody else that has not signed up. Okay? So, first one on the list is Robert Balco, Balco.
Robert Balco, 22 Perron Road. We decided to build there about 25 years ago. It's a backlot, and also, it's a dead-end street. And we did that for privacy. And we've also, I've been here with my wife and a few other people in our neighborhood because they wanted to put the walkway down the front of our street. Well, now it's proposed that they want to put it in our backyards, which is even worse than in our front yards. It's dark back there. I don't know what the lighting's gonna be. They can get to any of the houses or anything. And I strongly disapprove this. I'm 100% against this. If there's any other way, I know there was a couple other ways to go around it that were discussed, and now it looks like it's gonna go right by Carling Switch, from what we're told, and it's kind of a little bit vague, and I'd like to see a little bit more on it, and I know there's a hearing on, on Wednesday, which we'll attend also. But I really don't want to see that go behind our, our backyards. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Catherine Labella. I'm a property owner at 50 Pier Street. I oppose a trail that splits the Pier Street neighborhood as well as other residential neighborhoods in town. This proposed trail exposes your constituents to potential crime and presents major safety issues. Tonight, I'd like to address issues faced by the Southington community as a direct result of this rails-to-trails path. Starting within a month of the opening of the new section of the linear trail in 2011, property and business owners were plagued with vandalism. Town officials, business, and property owners were immediately faced with improvising ways to improve security. Town parks employees were enlisted to cover up graffiti and police patrols increased. This was a repeat of vandalism that occurred in 2007 and 2008 along the original section of the trail from Mill Street to downtown Planksville. Property owners were directly targeted even during the day, and please read the Southington Patch article that I've attached to this. Graffiti has occurred in many communities along the trail. Despite the fact that Southington tried to think out of the box related to this vandalism, allowing murals to be painted on, on buildings by local artists and youth groups, the vandalism continued. In 2014, the town council passed an ordinance making property owners responsible for cleaning up any graffiti on their, on their property. Businesses were asked to clear the graffiti within 48 hours. WFSB article cited Bob Ragazzino of Ragazzino Deli and Catering is saying that it would be tough for him to clean it up within two days, especially since his business sits along the rails-to-trails path, walking path, which is targeted all the time. At that time, the town council was also considering adding a fine to the ordinance. Pier Street has some of the only remaining historic brick buildings in town. Those buildings, the fences surrounding the old mill condos, the historical societies, society are all prime targets for the type of vandalism that is, that is occurring and still occurring in Southington. Our quiet neighborhood will be subject to the same nighttime vandalism as will downtown Plainville businesses. Do you really think that the rails-to-trails path will be developed at no cost to the town or at no cost to the taxpayer? What about the cost of increased patrols to neighborhoods or of additional safety measures? What about the cost of the continual, continuous removal of graffiti while the council has to deal with the issue? What about the cost of businesses leaving to town if forced to continuously remove graffiti? Please think seriously about what you're being told related to cost to the town and the taxpayer. I respectfully request that this statement and the attached articles become part of the public record along with the council minutes. Thank you.
Next on the list is Lois Robatali. I'm not sure I said that name.
Robatali, that's on there.
Okay, Lois, thanks.
Hi, my name is Lois Robatali. I live at 50 Pier Street, and I'm here because I want to make the council aware that I'm very much opposed to the Pier Street rails-to-trails, basically because of the safety and privacy reasons and a lot of the reasons that she just explained also. I'm, I do plan on attending that meeting on Wednesday also, but I just want it known that I am totally against that. Thank you.
Thanks, Lois. Roberta Lauria, Roberta?
Roberta Lauria, 18 Perron Road. Good evening. Thank you very much for your time this evening. For the benefit of Carol and the minutes, I would like to reiterate what I have said numerous times before. I oppose any trail or alignment that will have an impact on any neighborhood in this town, particularly Perron Road and Johnson Avenue, and the back of the homes on the even side of Perron Road. The other item I'd like to comment on is that I sincerely hope that during the upcoming presentation, one thing that is explained to this town is how they plan on making this trail safe for our community, especially for the children in our community. As what Kathy said earlier, just a few minutes ago, Southington's having a lot of problems. Well, I'm sure the reporters here will be happy to know that a lot of people do read the papers and the websites, based on the phone calls I've gotten and the comments I've gotten when I go out and about. And people are quite shocked as to what they want to do for Plainville. And I've gotten the same comments that Kathy explained here this evening, in terms of the graffiti, the vandalism, the things that are being stolen, and the things that are going on in Southington. I've heard from people in Farmington, in Canton, in Hamden, in New Haven, in Southington. Nobody understands why it has to be this kind of a system, because it doesn't exist anywhere else, and there are reasons for it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next person that's signed is Dan Verone. Did I say that right? From Thomaston?
That was the speaker.
Don or Dan?
That was you.
Oh, that was you. I'm sorry. You signed up on our, yeah. Thank you for doing that. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Yes, sir.
My name is Joel Edmund, 63 Ollivary Lane, corner of Condeale Lane. I'm gonna read this, because I spent a lot of time thinking, and it's quite precise. "There is a very simple solution or way to solve the dilemma for what we now call the Gap Closure Trail. It realistically is rails to trails. Our railroads in Plainville are active, so therefore, no rails are available to change, very expensively, I might add, to trails. What is the cost? No rail, no trail. The railroads, when they were constructed, did not impact that many people. If someone wanted to build near one, that was their prerogative. To impact so many people now going off and on road through Plainville is idiotic, wasteful, unsafe. For what? More liability from vehicle accidents, fallen limbs, animal attacks, burglaries, pollution, noise, litter, graffiti, damage to adjoining properties, and trespassing, to name just a few possible problems. Just two weeks ago, our planning and zoning committee waived a new 11-home subdivision for Condeale Lane Egress. This impacts my front yard, along with all the noise, traffic, safety issues, dust and debris, et cetera. This is very upsetting, not only to me, but my entire relatively quiet neighborhood. Now, with one of the preferred alignments, I would be impacted 30 feet behind my backyard on what appears to be the historic mule trail." on what appears to be the historic mule trail that pulled the old Plainville canal boats through wetlands, I must add. No, no. This cannot happen. It's not just my backyard. There are 15 other backyards on Hollyberry Lane and Condeale Lane. To look at the preferred alignment, there are many other properties which will be impacted, including Perron Road, Pierce Street, Hemingway Street. The way the proposed trail is laid out looks like a squiggly rat's nest from an aerial perspective. A snake could not contort itself to look like that. Railroad beds, especially inactive ones, are perfect for trails, mostly straight, few curves, flat, with no wetland issues. That's not to be for Plainville. No rail, no trail. Plainville has a diamond in the rough when it comes to the history of the old Plainville Canal, with a mule haul trail next to it in its original condition. It's not in Norton Park. That's been restored. No, it's right behind my house on Hollyberry Lane and continues quite a distance through the wetlands. It appears to me that the proposed gap trail is to be placed over the mule trail. Anybody who cares about Plainville history would not mess with that, especially impacting wetlands. Where is the Inland Wetlands Commission on this? Or just maybe this is another case of rushing a project through without a complete study of the impact on the environment? My father and grandfather.
Mr. Edman, I'm going to interrupt you. You've exceeded your time, so could you?
Well, I'm going to finish.
Are you almost done?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
My father and grandfather were farmers and contractors since the late 1800s. My father was third selectman for two terms and first selectman in Plainville during the 1950s. He would never have allowed this trail issue to be considered. Ruth Hummel and Betty Bokus, God bless them, would also not have approved of this. And I talked to Gary today, and he agreed with me. Plainville is only nine square miles. And this is important. I don't know. You know, I spent a lot of time on this and a lot of thought, and for many, many years. And I'm not going to be rushed.
Well, Mr. Edman, I'm trying to keep everybody at the same time for three minutes, as I said.
Does anybody want to stop?
So, you know, I'm trying to be fair to everybody that's here. There's other people that probably want to speak as well.
I like to listen to them.
Okay.
We have two rivers.
To wrap it up, I'd appreciate that.
We have two rivers, two active railroads running in all four directions, three state highways, one and one-half interstate highways, three good-sized ponds, and two mountains. Buses run back and forth, for the most part practically empty. If people want to cross through Plainville now without the proposed new trail, they are already doing it. Think about it. I know some people worked hard to solve this dilemma, but as far as I understand, Plainville does not have to do this. Is it really worth the cost, construction, disruption, and aggravation this gap closure will cause? Trust me, the world will come to an end if we don't close the trail gap. If what I have said sounds like I'm angry about this gap closure, it's true. I'm upset and mad as hell. How would you like it in your front or backyard? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir. I see you over there. I am going to ask the speakers to please keep your comments to three minutes. I know there's a lot of people here that may like, want to speak to the council, and it's fair enough to keep everybody at that same time limit.
Gary Olivera, 14A Perron Road. And I'm here to voice my opposition to the gap project. I feel that Perron Road is one of the last left jewels in the town. It's private, it's quiet, and I think that Rails-to-Trails running through our backyards would be an imposition to our privacy and our property values and mostly our security. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak? Gail? You'll be next.
Gail Dennehy, 28 Perron Road. Just for the record, I had Kathy Pulisic read a letter from myself and my husband Regine Carrier on September 11th. I wasn't able to be here, so I won't reiterate that. But just to add to the thinking that we've got now with the new information that we've been given for the Rails-to-Trails behind our Perron Road properties and the north side of Johnson Avenue and Perron Road, we still feel that there's a lot of vehicular traffic. The bus stops right at the corner there. I had mentioned that before. Now we're being told that there could be a trail behind Perron Road. We bought the property for quiet enjoyment, and we feel that that is going to not happen any longer. There'll be more traffic, there'll be more people, and we would prefer that that not happen in that area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Terri Missouri, and I'm at 26 Perron Road. And I strongly oppose the trails in my backyard, along with everybody else on Perron Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbanks Street. I'd like to start off the financial dashboard, just for clarity. Was there an August financial dashboard issued? There was not. Thank you. Also, now that we're looking at the financial dashboard, quick questions for you. I see Wheeler School Project has been added to the financial dashboard, and I thank you for that. But I also am questioning the high school parking lot. Is that a major project?
It's all part of the, well, part, Wheeler and High School are the same.
It's all the same.
I thought there were two different referendums.
No.
Nope.
No.
So it's all encompassed in the Wheeler School, even though it's the high school? Okay.
No, no. The high, the high school is, the number that's in there is separate from the high school. We could add the high school if you want, but we haven't spent any money on it.
All right, fine. And I think you may have alluded to it earlier in the meeting. You said something about track repair. Has that been cleaned up in the courts? Who's going to be paying for what?
It's being mediated.
Okay, so there's no answer yet?
Right.
Thank you. Okay. I got that out of the way, too. Just out of curiosity, with folks with this trail now, and it kind of, thank goodness it's not going by my place, because when I heard the term, it's going to start going through a backyard. The first thing you think about is an individual's backyard, is that's where the tool shed is. I think, if anybody owns lawnmowers and snow blowers, and they know what I'm talking about here. And to follow that up, I'm just curious, this new path we're talking about, has anyone on this town council walked it to see what we're talking about?
I haven't walked it the whole trail, but I do know where it's going.
How about the rest of the council?
I have not walked it.
I've walked parts of it.
Thank you. Okay, that's two. And number three, I'd like to bring this up just for general information for our town council. Last week, I went to a BOE, Board of Education, a meeting. I'm going to put it into categories. I found it very disappointing, and I also found it very informative and very well structured. Now, you wonder why the contradiction. The contradiction was, I was the only resident that was sitting in a BOE meeting. And I'd like to, I hope there's a lot of people watching this. The town of Plainville is spending a lot of money on schools, plans to spend a lot more money on schools, boilers, roofs, and everything else. And I find it very hard to believe that some parents can't find the time to go to these meetings. Now, following that up, the reason, and I'm somewhat directing this at our town council, I have the agenda, and let me, the agenda for the meeting was, and I want this clear, Plainville Board of Education, regular meeting. That meeting was very informative. It broke down almost every subject you wanted to talk about, which is happening in the school district, including pre-K. The thing that brought me to the meeting in the first place, and this is what I'm directing directly to our town council, is they have liaisons. Plainville High School liaison, Tofflon Liaison, Lydner Liaison, Middle School, and every one of them gives a report. I don't see that with our town council. The only one I've seen here is Mr. Carrier at, well, fact is fact.
Well, I have to say, Mrs. Maranti does give reports. She does do that on a regular basis, things that she tends.
I'm sorry. Forgive me on that. But I'm not picking, you know, we have an aviation committee. We have a police liaison.
Well, the police, Mr. Frangos?
Yes, ma'am.
They don't really have meetings. We communicate with them, and we talk to them when, you know, we're talking about budgetary items. That's not like a meeting of an aviation commission. There's not a meeting of the police.
Well, what's the difference? I shouldn't ask you that question.
Well, it's different. You understand it's different. There's not a meeting of the police.
Well, I'm saying, well, liaison is the same thing with going to a Tofflon school. I don't think it's a formal meeting.
Actually, they do have parent meetings, yeah.
And we don't have, in other words, we don't have a structured meeting.
They do. For the police?
Yeah.
No. But we do communicate with them on a regular basis.
Okay, and I guess in my case, I'm getting a little confused because I, one of the things that catches, catches me a little off guard, and I stand to be corrected on this, at times I sit in the back of the room, and I find it very difficult how something is being voted on when most of the people don't seem to know, and parents don't understand what's transpiring. And then almost on the same night, you'll vote on something. And I find that a little concerning, but you know what's going on, I don't. Thank you.
Well, if I may, the items that are on the town council agenda, the town council gets them in advance of this meeting. And they read all the information, and there's a lot of information that we see before we get here. If there's questions that we're not certain of, we can certainly communicate with the town manager or each other, for that matter. So by the time we get here, we've done our homework, and we've read all the material, and we understand what we're voting on, and we understand the implications of those votes. So the fact that we don't really talk about all of these items, even though they are discussed to some degree by the town manager, when he gives his report, those items that we are going to vote on, he will explain them, we have done all that work. So it's not as if we're voting because we saw it for the first time.
Then, if I may suggest, if there's some way it can be conveyed to residents, that in some of the times, this is taking place. And I think that would keep a lot of people away from this podium.
Well, as I said again, most of the items that we vote on, the town manager discusses in his report. And there are times where the council will question some of those items. That's during his report, is when we talk about those things that we're going to be voting on.
And some, and again, I repeat, if there's some way, in some of the cases, not all cases, I understand that, that that can be conveyed to residents, that it is indeed being looked at, because at times it sounds like, if I may use an example, and I don't want, I don't want to take up anybody else's time along the thing.
No, this is important, so everybody understands what happens here.
Okay. Well, one of them that kind of caught my eye, and I don't want to beat this to death because I brought this up before. What I had found difficult, very difficult, was the Wheeler School Project not being put on a major projects report. Now, what did I find difficult about it? It's not that it was an error by the office. Anyway, where I had a problem with is, no town council member questioned it. That's where I had the problem. Mistakes are made, that's, things like that happen. Maybe there was a reasoning not to do it, whatever. But I expected the town council to pick that up. And when you've got a resident that's not putting that much time into something, not just myself, other people, I don't want to put myself out there and, all right, that I will go up there and ask a question, and then you sit down and you say, shouldn't the council ask that question? Do you understand what I'm saying? And you probably have, but that should be conveyed to the residents that look, we are indeed looking. I'm not in the microphone.
Careful. Careful there.
I don't want to hurt myself.
Getting excited.
Thank you for your time.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir.
Dave Albert, 56 Hollyberry Lane. I know people are frustrated with this Rails-to-Trail. And we just had a subdevelopment put in on Hollyberry Lane. We had 40 signatures against it. We went to all the meetings, and frankly, the people on the committee roll their eyes. The lawyer for the developer berated one of the people. So people feel that you just don't listen to us. It, you know, it's bad. I mean, you look at the town now, you've got the dog trail, you've got this Rails-to-Trails, you've got this Hollyberry Lane, and people are all upset. I've lived here my whole life, and I've never seen this much discontent with town government. People are just not listening to homeowners. So taxpayers, yeah, we're all taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Marilyn Shoret, 18 Milford Street in Plainville. I grew up in this town. I used to ride my bike along Whiting Street up to the center every day and back home again. One day, I was riding up Whiting Street, excuse me, when you had the railroad tracks on Whiting Street, and I took a flip on my bike one day, thanks to the rails. So much for that. Had a lot of fun. I also grew up with a dog. He was a three-legged dog. His name was Tarzan. Tarzan won an award for the most unusual pet. I love dogs, but I don't believe in a dog park. Okay? I love bikes. I rode them all my growing up years. But I don't think that we need to disrupt neighborhoods. Everything that I've heard tonight makes me question it even more seriously. I want to point something out to you. One of the places that you're talking about, it ultimately going through the center of Plainville, is right past this town hall. Am I correct?
That is one of the alignments, right.
Okay. Right now, you have a marking for a bicycle trail coming right up to and just before the town hall. And then it stops, and it doesn't continue until you're over the other side of the railroad tracks. Has anybody noticed that? I'm not sure the reason for it in anybody else's mind, but in my mind, it's because it's a liability issue. Now, I don't know if anybody's thought about this, but I want to know who is on the hook when somebody get killed, gets killed out here, or on any part of the trail that you're talking about, because it can and probably will happen, and/or maimed or crippled. What I'd like to know right now, with your permission, Madam Chair, I'd like to poll each one of the council members, and I personally want to know where each of you stands. We have the elections coming up, and I need to know, as a resident of this community, where you stand on the Rails-to-Trails. And very, very simple. Who wants to start?
I'm going to ask the council if they wish to answer that question, or if they would like to speak to you after the meeting about it.
Okay, I would prefer to have it.
I understand that.
With the public.
But I'm going to, I'm going to leave the discretion up to each of these council people as to how they would like to talk to you about this.
Okay.
All right?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll answer her question.
Okay.
I'm not totally opposed to the rail and trails, but I'd like to get more information. I want to listen to the folks and the people. I want to hear what they have to say at the meeting on Wednes, is it Wednesday?
Yeah, I'm planning, I'm going to.
And I want to hear all that. I want to collect all the information, and at that time, I'll make my informed decision. But right now, I'm not totally opposed to the trail, the rail for trails at this point.
Okay. Do you, do you want it going through your neighborhood? I'm just asking.
I mean, if that's what's being proposed, you know, that's something I'd have to look at. But if it's going to go through my neighborhood, then it goes through my neighborhood. But I want to know what the pros and cons are of each of those neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to opine?
You know, I have, I will say that I have been an advocate of closing the gap and completing the trail, and I remain hopeful and optimistic that people can work together, can collaborate, and can compromise on a final design for Plainville.
Thank you. Yes.
You know, similar answer. I do support the idea of trying to close the gap, but I will make sure that, you know, I'm not speaking for anyone, I'm speaking for myself, is that we do have input from the public, because this is going to affect the public, and it's important that we, and I think Wednesday night's a good step to make sure everybody's got the same information. We can all agree to disagree in the end, but I think right now, we need We can all agree to disagree in the end, but I think right now, we need to share information. I would like to close the gap and find the best way possible. You know, maybe this isn't the best possible, but at least it leads to more discussion. You know, and personally, no. Would I want it in my front yard or backyard? No. I mean, I, you know, not necessarily. But I think there is a way to make it happen in Plainville where it doesn't necessarily affect people directly, and I think that's where we are right now. That's where I am right now, is to continue the discussion.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to chime in?
I'll answer also. Actually, following up on what my fellow council members have said, I actually agree a lot with Councilman Wazorko, that I am in favor of closing the gap. I have been from the beginning. I would like to see us do it in a way where, you know, it does not harm any individual property owners. I know we have a meeting coming up. I know that the town manager has been working very hard to try and alter the alignment to not negatively impact anybody. But I think it's important that we close the gap. And I do think that, you know, this is a trail that runs from New Haven to Northampton, Mass, and we're the last piece, and I would like not to be known as that gap. But I think that we do need to have some more discussion about potential alignments, and we've not had a public hearing. The council has not had any public session and taken input from people. So we hear people talking at the podium at this particular portion of our meeting, but we've not had an official public hearing. And I think that's an important step as well.
Thank you.
Marilyn.
Hi, Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to speak too. I think it's a great concept, closing the gap. I'm not sure that we can really do it without having any impact on property. So I'm not sold on it yet. And I don't know if I'll get there. I don't know if I will ever get there, but I'm closer than I was in the past, so.
Well, your neighborhood is one of the neighborhoods being impacted, is that correct?
Marilyn, excuse me, just for one second. They're going to give, they're going to answer your original question. We're not going to have a debate, okay? So if you're all right with that?
No, I was just qualifying, that's all.
Understood, but I'm just saying, please just let them finish their comments, and when they're done, we'll all be finished with this, okay?
I'm, I'm.
I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay. Thank you. I'm, I'm, I've said what I need to say.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, yes, I do also agree that the overall concept of a trail is a good idea. Like everybody else said up here, we need to have discussion about it, but I do think it's a project that is, overall, will impact our community in a positive way. I do understand all these folks that don't want it near their yard or in their yard. You know, yeah, if you took 10 feet of my yard, it would get pretty small. So I do feel bad for them, but I would like to continue the discussion and see if we can solve this and move forward, and have an overall project that the majority of people are happy with.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that. And I just have one last thing that I'd like to bring up, because I wasn't clear in the beginning of the meeting regarding the boiler. Has anybody actually inspected the boiler? And there was a lot of discussion, the pros and cons, but I never heard them say that it was actually inspected.
They have been. Yes, they have been inspected.
Yes, we opened them up.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't spoken yet? Yes, ma'am.
Linda Ferguson, 8 Perrin Road. I too am not in favor of having this trail go behind my house or in front of my house, and I'm not happy about it disrupting anybody's yards. But I would like to ask, what's the benefit to the town to bringing this through the town?
What's the benefit?
What does the town, what's the town going to get by bringing this through the town and finishing the gap, other than not wanting to be known as the people that don't finish the gap? What's the benefit? What are we going to get?
It's certainly an enhanced recreational activity that I would suspect people in Plainville will benefit from. They will perhaps use the trail to travel up to Northampton, Massachusetts, or through Farmington. There's some lovely areas that folks might want to take advantage of in doing that. One of the other reasons why this trail is, this particular alignment that we're speaking of is close to the center of town, is that when folks from outside of Plainville come into our town via the trail, we would like them to stop at some of our restaurants, and stop at some of our shops, and maybe get a feel for what Plainville's all about. So part of that has to do with encouraging people in Plainville to use the trail, as well as inviting others from outside of Plainville to come through our town in a different way.
Okay. This trail that goes in a butt's property, if people get hurt on our property, are we responsible?
If they get hurt on your property or on the trail?
They fall off the bike and get hurt on my piece of property, am I going to be responsible for that?
You know what, Linda, I can't answer that. I'm sure there's some insurance issues, either from the person that's riding that bike or walking that would take care of that. If they're hurt on your property, doing something on your property, that's a different story, but I can't answer, that's a kind of a.
Well, when we put these trails to, is there going to be something that's going to protect the people's property?
Absolutely.
Typically, there's fences that are put up between the trail and the property owners, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that hasn't had an opportunity? John.
John Kissler, 65 Forestwood Avenue. I received a phone call from Chairwoman Pagliisi after the last meeting, and she informed me that this is not a town meeting, this is a town council meeting. So when I asked for a point of order, I'm not allowed to do that in that type of meeting. That's new to me.
Oh, wow.
I'm sure everybody else here.
That is actually the truth of it, John.
Okay. So that's the way that goes. The other thing on this trail, I'm 100% against this trail, and I don't think you need any more testimony than what you heard tonight to make your decisions. And I think it's pretty sad that this council is waffling on this thing. This thing is bad. It has no benefit for the town of Plainville, in my opinion. It's going to be just aggravation and trouble, like they said with Southington and these other towns. Now, I want to change this up a little bit. The Tilcon Project. I have letters here, and I'm really, really concerned about this town council not keeping your town employee under control, the town manager. He testified before the Public Health Committee in March 7, 2016. I am here today to testify in support of Senate Bill 300, which would allow Tilcon to expand their quarry operation in the town of Plainville, on property owned by New Britton Water Company. Now, did this council ever give him permission to do that as a town employee? Then, there's another letter from him to Malloy. It's signed by Stewart, Lee, and Brumbach. Fortunately, Brumbach is history, he's going to be leaving. "This project offers many long-term benefits for the residents of towns. We urge to sign SB 300 so the city of New Britton can move forward with the retention of a consultant in thoughtful and environmental-sensitive review of the project." But on this other one, the bottom line is, Senate Bill 300 is a win-win for the economy, the future water sources of the region, the town of Plainville, and the surrounding neighborhood. I urge you to support this legislation. He is proposing, as town manager, that the state support this. And I know the council chastised Brumbach without permission. And if he didn't get your permission, I want you to have him rescind that letter. He is not representing me or thousands of other people in this town who are against that. And the thing is, in 2007, Tilcon tried the same gimmick again, but they were rejected by the state officials. And this is a very similar project, pretty much the same. They probably do this every eight, nine, 10 years. They think the people that protested passed away, and the people that are coming up now are clueless. We need to stop this project. And you, here's another one to question you, as town council members running for election. I'd like to know how you stand on this issue. I'll tell you myself, as a write-in candidate for town council, I am 100% against this project.
You're campaigning now?
Yes.
Just wanted to be clear, that's a campaign speech.
Right.
Because none of us have done that yet tonight.
Well, I feed everybody.
All right, John.
And I'm on nutmeg.
Okay.
And I don't have to appear there. But you should make it known.
Well, are you not waiting for the environmental study to be decided, John? I know that this is part of what, all of this you're talking about. There was a study that has been out there. I know it's been well over a year. It's been extended to another season, and all the information has yet to come back, so I'm not telling any, making a statement until I have the documents, until I understand it.
I take it the same way as this rails-to-trail. You're waiting for more info. I've been reading about this for a couple of years now, with the testimony from people about this. This is state-regulated watershed shed property, that they have to change a law to do this. If they change that law, it could affect the whole state of Connecticut, that they start going on watershed property all across the state and destroy our watersheds. That's all I need to know. All I know is it's bad for the environment, and it's bad for Plainville. But my main thing is, you've got to stop this town manager from doing this sort of thing.
Your time has expired, John.
I know.
Well, I would appreciate that you would also play by the rules.
You still have to stop him. He is a town employee. I feel bad that my taxes pay his salary. You people have to stop this. You have to.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Has not spoken yet? Joanne. I beg your pardon? Joanne. Three minutes, Joanne. We haven't started the clock yet, so you're safe.
You have 30 seconds left.
That's right, John. Don't tie me.
You're on, you're on the clock, Joanne.
Wait a minute.
I know.
I haven't started.
Okay. Are we ready?
Just one minute, I got to change glasses. I haven't said my name yet. Joanne Edmund, 166 West Main Street.
And so it goes.
You know, you guys are going to need all the prayer you can handle, and I'm saying the prayer tonight. "Oh, dear God, our Heavenly Father," should have come at the beginning, "please grant our town council the wisdom, knowledge, strength, and courage to perform their elected duties and responsibilities to the citizens and charter of Plainville." Amen. You've got a lot of decisions to make, and I didn't particularly like what I just heard up there. I heard quite a bit of indecision. That doesn't go too well. I still say, there are a lot of issues in this town. We got trouble, trouble, right here in River City. We have, what, two rivers running through it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So it really is River City. And I, this trail business, it's so invasive and intrusive. Don't you get it? The people don't want it. Let the bikers and bicycles and whatever rolly things there are, and walkers, get through the town as best they can, like they always have. We don't have to have this. And I feel sorry for them, that those that are going to have to deal with a trail either in the front or the back of their house, and all the problems that come with it. That just isn't fair. And I feel sorry for them. And think about it. You've got an election coming up, and I hope everybody thinks really careful about who they're going to elect. If you, you are waffling. That's what I heard, little ripples.
Madam Chair, I got to say something.
That's all. No, no.
I'm not making a decision based on what's going to happen in three weeks. I think that's unfair to say. I think it's unfair to say to everybody up here. You know, I think there's a way we can make this work that doesn't adversely affect.
But you're not listening, excuse me, you're not listening to these people out here.
I believe that was unfair of you to call us out on the fact that the election is three weeks away. I don't think anyone up here is making decisions based on whether or not they think they're going to get elected.
You're not, you're not listening to the people. They've been, every week, have been coming and coming to tell you that they don't want it.
I think we've been more than patient in letting people speak.
I'm in their corner.
There's a difference between not listening and not doing what you want us to do.
You're not the chairperson. Why don't you, why don't you just?
Joanne, you're done?
You can, I'm sorry, Joanne, you could have 30 more seconds.
Do you have further comment to make, Councilman Wazorko?
I actually do, but it's more of a personal nature, so when everyone's had a chance, I do need a couple minutes.
All right. You're waffling. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir.
David Spencer, 127 Milford Street Extension. Last week, at the library in the evening, there's a man who wrote a book on the trails and the canal between New Haven and Northampton, Mass. It was interesting and pretty enlightening, and, I mean, the concept of a trail, you know, running that distance seamlessly, it sounds good to the ear, and that's it. If people have the idea that this is a seamless trail between New Haven and Northampton without a whole bunch of gaps in it, and that little Plainville is going to be the big stick in the mud that screws up the whole trail because we won't complete this little gap in it, that's not the right information. There are all sorts of gaps, and gaps that will not be closed in this trail, especially north of us. I don't think we have to keep up with Southington and Cheshire and make this complete trail. I mean, it worked 150, 60, 80 years ago, when there was a lot of open space, and not many people, and they could do a trail and a canal between New Haven and Northampton. But it just, it won't work. Your people seem to be very fond of referendums, especially ones that perhaps you have the power to manipulate somewhat. Why don't we put this up to a referendum? Let the citizens, the people of this town, decide whether we want this trail or not. You know, I don't want seven of you and the manager deciding for the whole town. If you want to do a referendum on Lyndon's school, you want to do a referendum on the parking lot, you want to do a referendum on the elementary school, why don't we do a referendum on this trail? If we don't close the gap, we will not be the only people, so I just want to dispel that concept, if anybody has it in their minds, that there's this wonderful seamless trail between New Haven and Northampton, and the only gap is provided by a rebellious little Plainville. I mean, that's, that's not reality. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not spoken yet? Gail.
Sorry. Gail Black, 4 C N C Avenue. I wish Plainville had never separated from Farmington. It was part of Farmington years ago, many years ago, because other, now we would have a trail. Yeah, there's no gap, but there's little places, and most of the towns are working on it. I grew up in North Canaan on a dead end with woods, and the next thing we knew, there was a factory. But we got along. We were still able to get down to the railroad tracks and still play in the woods. But Plainville, I find, these people are. But Plainville, I find, these people are, I don't know, I'm not sure how to, you know, they're just set in their ways. I'm going to be 69 at the beginning of next year. I don't want to spend my time at the senior center. I don't care to do that. I want to be out there. I did, it was maybe 15 years ago, I did 11 miles in my roller blades in two hours. That's slow, but it was pretty good for me. I can't use my blades anymore, so now I've got to use my bike. And a lot of this crime that's happening, it's not just there, it's everywhere. It's the way life is today. You're finding crime everywhere. And it's like, I mean, they break in, if you go to a parking lot, they break into your car. So it's not just there. They broke into my apartment, not my apartment, but my apartment complex near the movie theater. They parked their car on 84, these people, and then they walk through the woods. People are not going to do that on the trails. People are happy on the trails. They don't fall... I did see an older man fall on his bike, but he fell on the trail. And a lot of us try to go when it's not busy, and it's so relaxing. I find Plainville backwards. I'm living here because I can afford it, but I have to go out of town for adult ed because they don't have good classes. I have to go out of town for my doctors. You know, it's just like, Joanne would be in better shape if she did the trail. She'd be able to get up there to the podium quicker.
And I'm sure it is, my dear.
I'm just saying that. A lot of people here would be in better shape, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks. Does anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Joseph Kohar, 14... Excuse me, my voice is a little raspy. 14 Perrin Road, Plainville. I do oppose this trail due to safety purposes. The stop sign that comes down from Johnson Road to that dissects Perrin Road, which was the first deal they were going to do and go through the front yard, now they're going through the backyard. You know, this is real. A couple of weeks ago, after the first time we were up here, me and a friend of mine, we're not going to mention names, we sat out there on a Saturday, and by his house, somewhere around that vicinity on the corner where we could see, and we seen a lot of cars go by, not even that stop sign there. They just dissect it. They just keep going. Now, you're taking it around the backside of the yard, and they're going to be coming this way and that way. And there's kids on the bus stop, a young couple, a couple people already bought those houses at the end of the road there. And I'm just concerned more about the safety thing, really. If there's any alternative to go around it, maybe go up northwest where the bike diamonds are, they have some paintings there ready for a bike trail, where the parking lot is. And just for safety's sake, that's what I'm looking out for. Because this sign, you could, in 45 minutes, we counted like three or four cars just blast through there, through its people, actually. This is the first, somebody driving with their knees and texting through that stop sign. Okay? I'm just letting you know what's happening.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't spoken?
Can I ask a question?
Nope. Once you get one turn, you're done.
Okay.
You're done, Gail. Okay. If we are finished with those that have signed up or that had it up...
Madam Chair, if I could just have a couple of minutes if we're done. It's more of a personal nature.
I have a couple of... I was going to read something, but if you...
It's up to you how you want to do it.
...if this is about the conversation that's going on here?
It has nothing to do with the conversation going on here.
Okay.
How do you go first?
Okay.
Thank you and good evening. Christopher Mizorko, 19 Usher Ave. I'd like to, just on behalf of the Christopher and Mizorko families, thank the town for everything they did with Teddy's passing. We specifically, we really would like to recognize the police department, the buildings and grounds, the highway guys, all the work they did, all the stuff they did for the people waiting. Some people were waiting three hours plus, and they provided shade, they brought tents out, they brought water out, and they didn't wait to be asked. They did it before any of us actually even knew how big the line was. So from both families, we really, a sincere thank you to everyone who helped out. Quinn's not quite there yet. She will, at some point personally, come and thank everybody, but it's going to take her a little bit more time, I believe. But again, thank you for everything. We really appreciate it. It doesn't go unnoticed. And it was, you know, when you have people awake coming up to you and saying what such help they had outside and what great people we have working for the town. I had about 25 people who specifically, when they got to me, said the town couldn't have handled this any better. So again, thank you, and I appreciate you giving me the time.
Absolutely. And again, condolences to you and your entire family, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing that all have spoken, that had signed up or asked, we had been, the council has been given some letters that would like to be part of this proceeding tonight. I'm not going to read them verbatim, but I will give you a synopsis of what has been turned in. First one was from Gail Pagliisi. She lives on 50 Pierce Street. She's not opposed to the bike path, but she doesn't think it's appropriate for safety reasons. 66 units with some having two cars. It's more like 100 cars a day coming and going. Coming out of the complex, you don't have a clear line of sight, and with the funeral home being built, it's sure to add more difficulty to the area. If we widen the sidewalk, most likely trees will be disturbed, and there's a possibility some may die. There was some indication of Pierce Street becoming a one-way street that has not yet been decided or talked about in any formal fashion, but Gail had heard this apparently from somebody. So she finally closes with, "I hope you do not approve this part of the bike path down Pierce Street." The other letter we received was from Mr. Ken Jones. He also is writing to avoid his objection to the gap closure running through Pierce Street. His objections are mostly due to safety concerns. He has a dog that he walks and had a concern. One time, he had to cross the road to get away from another dog, and cars came by very quickly, so that was a problem. There are issues with cars speeding on the road, and in a short time that he was on the street, four cars passed him, two drove at a reasonable speed while others drove at unsafe speeds. He's very concerned about the safety for himself and others in the neighborhood, and he asks that this also be included as part of our deliberations tonight. Everybody got a copy of these emails, so it is part of our record. Okay. I thank you for all your comments. Certainly, there's a lot that's happening in Plainville, and the council takes all these comments seriously and will be attending the Wednesday meeting to gain some more information about the potential rails-to-trails path. Note, we do not have any old business to take care of, but we do have a few items under new business.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that we authorize the town manager to execute the Eversource Energy Opportunities Program proposal with PTE Energy. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'd like to thank Steve Bustle for providing the tour of the middle school so that we could go and look at the equipment that's been there since the school was built. I certainly am, I will not claim to know anything about heating or ventilation, but I appreciate that you took the time that we could come and look at that. And at that time, that boiler was shut off, and it had leaked on the floor, and if it's catastrophic failure, then that sounds pretty terrible to me. So thank you for doing that.
Yeah, I'd like you to at least give the opportunity for Steve just to make a couple more statements with regards to the inspection of the boiler, because he met with some other representatives, inspectors, and give, you know, perhaps a little bit more clarity to some of the issues that were brought up by Mr. Seattle.
Sure. Steve, do you want, do you have a few...
I'm sure it'll just be a moment.
I'm sure it's fine. Would you embellish on what we've already heard?
Yeah. I'd like to reiterate, last week, we opened up the boiler, we took the burner out of it and took some of the skin out of the, off the outside of it so we could try to inspect it. We found a crack on the outside where it had been slowly leaking before, and we found a crack on the inside, only one that we can see, that caused the combustion chamber to fill up with about six inches of water. I've spoken with a couple of mechanical people, and Dan saw the boiler before it was broken down. That's why I brought him in. He has experience with these type of boilers, although he didn't see what this actual failure was. When these boilers do fail like this and crack, it's usually because the metal has gotten weak. As they were saying, with proper care, they do last 25 or 30 years. Now, we've been, I've been with the schools for 13 years, and since I've been there, we've been treating the boilers. But before then, it was Service Master was here, and I don't believe any chemical treatment was ever done to those boilers. So you've got a good, you know, 15, 14 years of the hard water we have in Plainville doing its work on the inside of that boiler. So if I can answer any other questions, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Is there any other questions anybody would like to ask Steve?
Yeah, I just have a quick question.
Yep.
How many boilers are there?
There's two.
There's two, and one is down.
One is down. The backup, right, we have, they alternate, usually one will run lead and one will run lag. Very rarely do we need two boilers, maybe on a very, very cold morning, 0 degrees or lower, we'll need two to get the building up to temperature, then one will take care of it.
So how long do we have with that second boiler? I mean, is that...
Your guess is as good as mine.
So, and there's nothing wrong with that boiler at this point?
Its circulator pump was gone, but we took the pump off the one that failed and swapped them out, so it is operational.
And we can live with one boiler in that school for now?
We can operate on one boiler, right, but if it goes down, then the building has to get shut down.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other comments or questions, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Number two.
Madam Chair, motion to approve the tax refunds is listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just before we adjourn, I know, I believe regarding the administrator's contract, this is, since we're not meeting the November 6th, if we do want to take action, we do need to do it tonight. Otherwise, the 30 days will have passed. I don't know what the councils, you know, we want to act, you know, normally, we do vote on contracts. We don't let them go the 30 days, but I was just bringing that to the attention of the council, if we want to vote on that.
Well, if we don't vote on it, the contract will be adopted as recommended, correct?
Yeah, no, and I understand that. It's just been our tradition to, you know, we usually vote on contracts, but...
Well, in order to vote on it, we'd need a motion to add it to the agenda. Before we do that, I would like to get a sense of the council's thinking on this. Do you want to add that and vote on the administrator's contract tonight, or do you want to let it go in as is?
I'm okay with either.
Sorry?
I'm okay with either, whatever the majority wants to do.
Well, we've been asked to vote on it by Councilman Mizorko, so if that's the case, we're going to add it to our agenda now. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Fine with me.
Can I have a motion to add it to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? So now, can we vote?
Now, we just need someone to tell us what the motion would be.
Do you want to just, a motion to approve...
It goes from 2018 through 2020. What, 21? Thank you. I make a motion, we approve the administrator's contract for the term of 2018 to 2021.
Second.
I have a motion and a second.
Now, we can figure out what needs to be added to that.
Well, as ratified by both the Board of Education and the Administrator's Union.
Thank you.
Okay. Does everybody have that? Are there any comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Do we have any other items of interest that we need to discuss?
I don't have anything.
Okay. I would like to add that this is the last meeting before the next municipal election. I wish everybody up here well. I know you all work very hard, and for this high-paying, fun position that you're in, but I do wish you well because you put a lot of time and energy and effort into this, and I appreciate all the time that you do that.
Good luck, John.
All right.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to move into executive session for a personnel matter?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.